Good evening. Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting, City of Rockport, for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. It is 6:30 PM. I will ask that you stand to join us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Establish your quorum. We'll have a roll call. Ward one?
Here.
Ward two is absent. Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
Mayor here. First item on the agenda is a presentation by the police chief for promotion of Officer Timothy Sawicki.
Mayor, council, city staff, members of our community, I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to do what is really my favorite part of this job. Officer Tim Sawicki has been with us for about three years. He is going on his 13th year in law enforcement, I think. Began his career, he graduated from the area, the Alamo Area Council of Darwin. It's Police Academy in 2010. He started actually here in Aransas County with the sheriff's office, later moving to the Atascosa County Sheriff's Office, and then to the Jordanton Police Department where he did the bulk of his career, or a lot of his career, as a K-9 sergeant when he left there. And I like to say, we stole him, brought him back down to the coast to our department. Most all of his time, or all of his time so far, he's been in our patrol division and done really great work for us. We, or I'm gonna say we, Captain Anderson, our CID commander, held some interviews. I took part in that. I take a personal role, looking at work record, everything from attendance, disciplinary things, all of those matters, to pick our best candidate. I can say that any one of the four that showed interest and that we looked at, I think, would have done a great job. But Officer Sawicki was our choice, and I think is gonna make a really fine detective. So we're gonna promote him today. Over the last two weeks, he's been in the CID unit and has been training. I'm gonna say that I haven't changed my mind, but it's been the busiest two weeks for CID since I've been here with shootings and there was a fire, there was, I'll go on and on, but nonetheless, I think that's mere coincidence. But needless to say, about to be Detective Sawicki has been drinking from the fire hose. I think he's gonna do an outstanding job. Some things I'll point out about him, his numerous certifications, he's a field training officer, one of the ones I've relied heavily on to train new officers coming into the RPD. He's a breath test operator, mental health peace officer, he's a certified K-9 handler, he's a T. Cole certified instructor, and recently, we sent him to Georgia, actually, to be what is a very rare thing in our industry, a standardized field test instructor to teach officers how to do DWI investigations, or not just how to do that, how to teach others, how to teach to do standardized field severity testing. It's a rare one. We're lucky to have that, so he can teach those classes to our folks and other coastal bend area police officers. He's also a certified bike patrol officer. Tim's wife is the ISS coordinator at the Rockport Fulton Middle School. She also coaches middle school basketball, as well as middle school and high school softball. They have four children here in Rockport. They attend Rockport Fulton schools and are very involved in youth sports and the community. Needless to say, they are ingrained in the Rockport Fulton community. In his free time, Officer Sawicki enjoys spending time with his family and his friends and attending country music concerts and watching sports. He's kind of become, in the three years that he's been here, one of the biggest parts of our department, our city, and our community. So with no further ado, we can step over to the other side. There's some pictures that need taking. One of the things that we do is ceremonious, is we'll have, we always have someone of importance to the officer, pin their badge on their shirt, we'll do that in a minute. This doesn't happen in a vacuum in a police officer's career as they promote up. We don't do this alone. You have to have a very important support group. My wife is here with us. She comes to as many of these as she can, because she knows better than anyone. And I know that I'm here in my position in no small part because of her and the support of my family, her, my daughters, my individual family, our close family, her parents, everyone else. Tim's family, his wife, his kids are here, and his important individual that's gonna pin this badge on is his son. So we'll let him do that real quick. We'll step out of the way, and that's their moment. I promise you won't get called out as much as you have in this next two weeks.
I promise you won't get called out as much as you have in this next two weeks. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. 6th, 2023, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Teresa Valdez, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. It went this way of, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Rockport, Texas, to be affixed this 25th day of April, 2023. Teresa?
Thank you. Thank you for all of you that were here. It's a pleasure to meet you.
We have several people who have signed up to speak tonight. We have several pieces of paper that have been provided to us on the citizen participation forms, and because there are several, and they are on about three agenda items, they will be called when that agenda item is called, for this meeting, because there are many to avoid confusion. So when that agenda item is called, we will call you, and you can speak. If you have signed up to speak on something that is not on the agenda, then your speaking time will come first. After that, the items will be called. When that item comes up, you can speak on that item. Citizens to Be Heard. This time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located at the table in the back of the training room in the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any agenda item or subject matter. They will be read, summarized in the minutes, and the meeting persons wishing to address the council and have registered using the citizen precipitation form will have up to three minutes to speak. And again, this will be as the item is called. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that's not been posted on the agenda. While civil criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Do we have any items not on the agenda? Okay. So you will be called when the agenda item is called. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. I am removing items number 12 and 13 from the consent agenda, and they will be considered separately. Other than that, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus items 12 and 13 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further question or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Using the chair's option, I am going to pull item number 21 before we go any further, and we're gonna call that item and deal with it before we go on. Item 21 is deliberate an act on appointment of Messer Fort and McDonald, PLLC, to serve as legal counsel for the City of Rockport.
Mayor and council, recently you went through a process, a selection process, and we had RFPs submitted, we had six people submit, we picked the top three to come in for interview, and after interviews, and based on scores, Messer Fort, McDonald came out at the top, and so I would ask that you appoint them as our official city attorney.
All right. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that the city council appoint Messer Fort and McDonald, PLLC, to serve as legal counsel to the City of Rockport.
Thank you. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate? I'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you very much. It's good to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Going back to item number 12, if you have signed up to talk on item number 12, let me look at these and see, there is one, two, we will take you, then we will read some that have been sent to us already. Let me, if you will, let me read the item and what it says. I'm about to not do that, it'd be nice if everybody else knew what we were talking about. Deliberate an act on second final reading of an ordinance amending Article IV of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance number 1027 by changing the zoning and land located at 102 St. Francis Circle, also known as Lot 2, Block 1, Tomasco subdivision, 3.445 acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, from R1, first single-family dwelling district, to B1, general business district, to allow the use of monitored outside parking, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
My name is Brian Phillips. My wife Tammy, we currently live at 325 Griffith Drive, directly across the street from 102 St. Francis Circle, which we own. We're the owners of that property. Basically, nothing has changed since our last visit we had here. We wanna do the monitored parking, we wanna make it really nice, we wanna emphasize, we don't wanna take away from anybody's home value, especially ours, we live directly across the street. We wanna do something that's very eye appealing, privacy fences, and we acquired highway frontage so that it can enter and exit on the highway, so it doesn't increase any traffic in the neighborhood. I plan on putting one gate across the street from our house, so I can get access for maintenance for myself, and that's it. We understand that the City of Rockport has had that area slated for future commercial use, so eventually, something's gonna go in on that highway there. I guess, as an owner, and as living directly across the street, we wanna control that. We wanna have something that's really nice. We don't want a 7-Eleven, or a Buc-E's, or anything like that to look at. We wanna keep it, you know, where it's really nice.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chris Anderson?
I live next door to the property that Brian's talking about, not live there, I just now built the condominium, and I'm with Brian on this. I have no problem with him getting this changed to the B1, and I'm sure he's gonna do something nice, you know, so some of the people have been complaining or whatever, but, you know, one day, I may want to change mine from residential to commercial, because both of us have highway frontage there, and, you know, it's all about the dollar bill, you know, so I'm with Brian on this, and I have no quarrels about changing it over.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I have two, let me read these. I have one from Jerry Lopez, who lives at 309 St. Francis Circle. I would like to voice my opposition to rezoning of Lot 102. I feel that this will create undue traffic issues and congestion in an area that's pretty much residential, with people walking and kids riding bikes and so forth. It will only be a matter of time before we have some incident with traffic and a pedestrian. This is a lot is zoned residential and should stay residential. If they wanted to have a business, they should have bought a lot that was zoned commercial, and we wouldn't be here. I feel that this will also hurt the home values in our small secluded area here next to Club Lake. Who wants to have a home next to a boat barn or convenience store and so forth? How many of you on this board would like that next, like that next to your house? I think not. You all need to think about the impact this will have on our neighborhood, and not just worry about the tax revenue that the city stands to gain. I know it's all about the money, but sometimes you must think about the people you are going to affect, not to mention the issues this is going to have on the bypass. Can you imagine trying to pull onto the bypass in the morning with traffic coming at 75 miles an hour? I know I must do it every day when I go to work. We will see how much that tax revenue is worth when someone gets killed on the bypass trying to pull out there with a boat and trailer, or pulling out with a convenience store, or whatever they decide to put there. The other issue is going to be the noise, not that there is not enough noise from the bypass already, but now we're going to have people coming in and out at all hours of the night and day on top of noise from the bypass. How would any of you on this board like that at your house? This is a bad idea, will create a lot of problems that don't exist now. I oppose to it, as I know the people on St. Francis Circle do, and I would think that the people in Peninsula Oaks would oppose it as well. It will increase traffic in their neighborhood. Thank you for your time. I have one from Andrew Kane at 2106 Lakeview Drive. I'm adding some transparency to the proposed rezoning of St. Francis that is currently on the consent agenda. The application from R1 to B1 is vague and incomplete, with a stated purpose of parking question mark. It's not best practice to change R1 zoning without conceptual plan and idea for the proposed use. I have heard statements at PNZ and council meetings, the petitioner has no idea for the land use, his claim is to bring it back to business zoning before it was annexed. The reality is, this parcel was never zoned business, as the county does not have zoning. That lot did not have frontage on the bypass until a few months ago, when a sliver of land was purchased from certified auto. This lot is surrounded on three sides with large estate homes. The petitioner has stated he will not cut down trees, but he is unable to promise that will happen when the property is sold. The adjacent landowner has built a structure which is similar to the structure on the boat lodge storage facility property he built six years ago and plans to purchase this lot for development. At a minimum, you owe the residents in this neighborhood a thorough and detailed review of potential development before turning R1 into B1. PNZ recommended 4 to 1 against this request. Honor that recommendation.
This one's from Timothy Templis, 205 St. Francis Circle. He's opposed. I'm a resident of this neighborhood, and I'm opposed to changing zoning of property at 102 St. Francis Circle. I feel that a commercial business and increased traffic would endanger our children, pets, et cetera. Also, increased traffic would deteriorate our already damaged roads in the general area. This is a residential area and should remain as such.
We have James McMahon, 310 St. Francis Circle, believe it's opposition. Rezoning of the 3.445 acres at 102 St. Francis from R1 to B1 would increase neighborhood traffic and lead to more traffic accidents. Highway 35 bypass has had numerous serious accidents and fatalities along the intersect area from the Corpus Christi Street, Griffith Street to St. Francis Street. Traffic speed limit is 75 miles per hour past this property, which also happens to within the Rockport city limits. The proposed development would be for boat barns. Trucks trailing boats pulling onto Highway 35 before daylight and pulling back into the storage area would be an accident waiting to happen. Neighbors across the street and sides of boat storage would awaken the sounds of honking up and lights flashing into their bedroom windows. I believe that residential housing would be a better option for a Peninsula Oaks neighborhood. Then we have Suzanne Frelles on 213 St. Francis Circle. I'm, in reference to agenda item 12, rezoning Lot 2, Block 1, we live less than 100 yards from the proposed rezoning area, and we are never asked our opinion nor notified by our city council member of this proposal. As one of the residents most impacted due to our proximity, our opinions should be carefully considered by the members of this council. I would like full disclosure of the reasoning behind the change and the purpose behind those proposing this change from its current status as residential. Why vote in favor? There is an obvious abundance of commercial property along the bypass currently. Why change the zoning ordinance from residential? Would council members allow the change adjacent to the current residence? Do those proposing this change for their financial gain have residence in this area? Please explain the urgency and direct need to change it with so much commercial property and boat and RV storage and RV sites already available along the bypass. Why must we rezone current residential property? Loss of property value, increased traffic, and obvious potential for the major vehicular accidents merging into traffic at 75 miles per hour is the reason to vote no for this change. City council, listen to the residents impacted and those who are elected to represent. We will be watching, and we will be voting according to each election. Then we have Donnie Frelles on 213 St. Francis Circle. Regarding agenda, item number 12, rezoning Lot 2, Block 1, our family residence approximately 100 yards from the lot in question. At no time were notified our opinions requested regarding this proposed change in zoning. Residents were all purchased under the current zoning ordinance as residential. Changes to status now impacts us both financially and property value and residential safety. With the abundance of commercial property currently available along the 35 bypass, there is no reason to change the residential ordinance. The lack of turning lanes, traffic lights, and traffic merge lanes in a 75 mile per hour speed limit is already an inherent public safety hazard for a residential area. Our residential traffic on the west side of the bypass near St. Francis Circle merging north of 35 must cross at Griffin. Additional commercial traffic, especially boats and RVs, will lead to increased congestion and add to an already extremely dangerous situation. Even heading south on the bypass from Griffith, our St. Francis Circle into traffic at 80 miles per hour with no merge lanes is obvious poor design and needs to be addressed. St. Francis Circle roadway is already in extremely poor shape due to increased vehicle activity. Additional commercially zoned areas are neither warranted nor desired by the residents who will be impacted. Boat barns and commercially zoned areas already exist in the abundance on the bypass. There should be no valid reason for the changing of this existing ordinance in place.
I have no other forms. I ask you to address this particular issue. Our building person is tied up. Are there questions from council? That's okay. Ms. Dietrich?
Yes.
Has anything changed as far as the ordinance goes from the time we had our last meeting?
No, sir.
Questions from council?
I just want a point of clarity. We're required to notify everyone within a 200-foot radius?
Correct.
And that was done, and I know that was done?
Yes, ma'am. And to clarify, the properties west of St. Francis Circle are not in city limits, and they get a letter to within 200 feet within the city limits, so they would not have gotten a letter.
I have a question, carry on quick. So I'm reading a lot of this opposition, but I keep seeing a key word on here is boat barns, and from the actual residents that own the property, I have not heard anything about boat barns.
That is not what they have said they intend to do, no.
I guess my question is, have you seen any plans or anything, what they... I guess my question is, have you seen any plans or anything of what they do propose to?
No, ma'am, nothing's been submitted.
But they, if we rezonate, they can use it for anything that's acceptable in that zone.
Future land use map also shows it is commercial.
Also, whatever the use is that the current owner or future owner may have for it, when a building proposal is brought into the city, it will be reviewed and compared with all of our ordinances, regulations, trees, noise, lights, and so forth.
Yes, sir.
And whatever the property is used for will have to be in compliance with city regulations. Is that not right?
That's correct, sir.
Whatever it is or whoever develops it.
Yes, sir.
Now, is this done any different from any other rezon, I mean, I know we have rezoning in front of us quite often. Do you have other people that have to bring in all their plans before we rezonate property?
Everyone does.
Everyone?
Not before rezoning? No, ma'am.
Before rezoning, yes. What is the normal practice on that?
The normal practice is they file a request for rezon. They state why they want to rezon. And they can present a conceptual plan, but most don't. They state why they want to rezon and then it comes to P and Z and to you.
Anything else?
Mayor.
Brad.
Can you have Ms. Dietrich speak this to P and Z, the four to one vote, what their thought process was on P and Z?
I can ask. Ms. Kim is here. Ms. Kim Hesley with the P and Z is here.
Kim Hesley, Planning and Zoning Commission. We recommended denial because we felt like in, even though, because this is B one and there's a long list of approved uses under B one, that going forward, regardless of what the immediately contemplated plans were, that things could change, property can get sold down the road, being that it is surrounded by residential, that this was probably one of the few exceptions to that future land use map along the bypass where being in a residential area, that general B one was not appropriate for this particular piece of property.
Anything else?
Yep. Certified Auto is next to this property, correct?
That's correct.
And that's still zoned R one?
It is. They were grandfathered because they were there when they were annexed.
But?
So they're considered legal.
If they were to sell, it would be a B one.
The use, yes. If they want to make any modifications or extend the use to the building, they would have to come and rezon because they're considered legal nonconforming and you can't modify a legal nonconforming use.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. I would like to make a motion if I can, I want to make sure I make this correctly. I would like to postpone this item until I get more information on what's going to happen. I would like to table this until I get more information on what is going to be put on that land, just to make.
Postpone?
Postpone.
Postpone.
I would like to make a motion to postpone until I get more information on what they would like to do on the property.
I can second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to postpone to a further date. Any further question? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. I'm number thirteen. I have two forms. Got three. Okay, first one, let me read the item. I'm going to forget to do that again. Item number thirteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of ordinance amending Article four of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty seven by changing the zoning of land located at eighteen oh six Highway thirty five north, also known as Villa del Palmas, Unit A, B, C, and D, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, to R six Hotel Motel District to allow the use of short term rentals currently zoned R five second multifamily dwelling district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. I have got a form from Mr. Terry Shannon of nineteen oh five Cochrane Lane. If I call your name and you're here and want to talk, let us know. If not, it'll be read. I'm against the rezoning of this property. Too much traffic and noise already. Thank you. From Mary Christine Ritter of nineteen oh one Cochrane Lane. I'm opposed to rezoning the Villa del Palmas property. Little Bay Shores is a walking community and the increased traffic and parking will make walking dangerous. Also, there is not enough parking for all the vehicles that would come from short term rentals. Frankly, I don't want to fight to be able to park on my property or to back out of my driveway. Short term rentals bring more than two car limit that is required for each unit. If a place sleeps eight, then generally you can count on four cars, sometimes more. There simply is not enough room at the Villa del Palmas property for that many vehicles, especially if some bring boats. How do I know this? I witnessed it in Port Ranges and warned the City of Rockport Council under Pat Rios about the potential for this problem. Also, I believe the Villa del Palmas property will make exceptional single family housing. It is located near schools and shopping. Best which is Christine Ritter. And finally, from Melissa Fox at nineteen ten Cochrane Lane. Deliberate and act on second final reading of ordinance amending Article four for the City of Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty seven. It is an exact quote of what I just read a second ago. And nothing else on it. Anyone else have one for item thirteen? Anything changed that we know of? Okay. Is anyone here from the project that you want to speak to your project again? All right. If no one does, do I have any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda item thirteen as written.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two and ward three.
Ward three, no.
Ward four?
No.
We have a tie vote. It does not pass. It will be called back for another meeting. All right. Item number sixteen, I have. But it will be back on an agenda for future meeting? It won't? It will not? Excuse me. Okay. Item number sixteen, item sixteen here. Yeah, we did. Yes, regarding motor vehicle crime prevention authority grant. Okay. I'm skipping a public hearing. Will conduct a public hearing, consider request to revert back to original planned unit development as described, as described in ordinance number thirteen eighty five for property located at seventeen twenty four FM thirty thirty six, also known as LaSalle Estates, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, which is planned unit development, PUD, single use overlay district containing eighty attached single family dwelling townhouses along with such features and amenities, currently zoned PUD with R five use second multifamily dwelling district. We are in a public hearing. It is seven oh seven PM. Yes, sir.
LaSalle unit. I apologize because we had this rezoned about five years ago for a potential buyer. It looked great on paper, but it didn't work out. So we've been proceeding as a single family development anyway and would like to continue to proceed that way. Have no intention of building any duplexes or apartments or anything.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, we have questions. We'll close the public hearing. It is seven oh eight. Regular agenda, item number sixteen. Here presentation regarding motor vehicle crime prevention authority grant, MAG, being used to fund program with Flock Safety, Inc. for six fixed pole mounted automatic license plate cameras in and around the city chief. Do you have? Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I skipped you. I've got a lot of notes on my agenda thing up here and I'm looking down, reading those and not looking where I am. So y'all excuse me for a second. We've got a couple of comments here. Go ahead.
This is from Patrick Kane at one one two three East Cedar Street. He is opposed. I find it interesting this was brought to city council for action in December and met considerable resistance, yet it appears today as in violation only. I also find it interesting today's agenda packet includes a petition accepted by the city secretary despite being clearly.
Invalid both in format and by being signed by people outside Rockport. To put it simply, this petition is not an accurate survey of residents' desires whether Rockport should employ license plate readers. In December, you were told there wasn't any cost to the city for this system. However, this agency packet shows a four thousand dollar match is required this year and it isn't clear who is funding fifteen thousand dollars for the second year, given the grant is for a maximum of twenty. In December, you were told a stop could not be made without confirming through dispatch whether it is the right vehicle. This is not true. Per the twenty twenty directive, officer discretion determines whether circumstances allow confirmation. In December, you were told the police department was already using license plate readers and that police and that policies were in place. In January, I did a public information request for records showing how the system was being used and whether its use had led to any arrest and was told. We have no documents responsive. Please keep in mind these records were mandated in the twenty twenty two directive, so how is it possible for the records to not exist? One reason would be if the police department doesn't believe it is accountable to either city council or the public. In fact, the policy they provide in today's agenda packet clearly shows that to be the case as they stripped away the limited oversight provisions provided in the twenty twenty two directive. It is a bad policy and city council should require an immediate rewrite to ensure appropriate oversight and protection of our civil liberties. I have provided my council representative the language that has been recommended by other government entities and it cuts off. Christie Rutledge. Eleven twenty four Dana Drive, I think. I am opposed to the use of LPRs in Rockport and I am asking city council to borrow the use of automatic license plate readers by Rockport Police for the following reasons. One, Chief Stevens was not transparent with the public or city council when asked on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two about the Tech Dot grant. The grant was applied for and awarded on June ninth, twenty twenty two with a start date of June fourteen, twenty twenty two. But Rockport City Council did not authorize the mayor to apply for the grant until June twenty eighth of twenty twenty two. Therefore, preauthorization for the application was not given by council is the resolution required by Tech Dot to accept the valid. On December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, the police chief told council that policies and protocols were already in place for use of mobile LPRs. But when asked for records and logs required by our PD's January thirty first, twenty twenty two LPR directives, the city responded that no documents were responsive. If it was too much trouble to keep records according to the directive with the mobile LPRs, how can citizens of Rockport trust Rockport PD with fixed LPRs? The police chief told city council on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, he did not think the Tech Dot grant rose to the threshold of needing to bring it to council, but clearly public outrage proved differently. The charade of the after the fact petition that is in today's agenda packet should give you pause and make you wonder why the grant for ALPRs has been politicized. Current policy in the agenda packet does not protect civil rights of citizens. Anyone can be tracked for any reason and no records will be available to the public. City council should require that protocols and policies for use with ALPRs in Rockport be held to the most restrictive and highest standards. Please reference the state of Minnesota statutes governing use of ALPRs and data practices for highest standards of data practices, and she provides a link. ALPRs should be restricted to only those with warrants. Detailed logs of ALPR usage should be maintained, audited independently, and be available for the public to view. Instead, the new policies in today's agenda prohibit public access and allow surveillance of anyone without cause. How can the public trust if we can't verify the logs? Given the manner in which the grant was acquired without prior authorization and the deletion of any small protections for citizens in the January twenty twenty two LPR directives, city council should act to rescind authorization for the Tech Dot grant, do not authorize contract, MOU, or resolution for Flock systems.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Come right ahead.
Hi, I'm Jacob. I want to talk about Flock Safety Incorporated. I am highly concerned about them, the company. We are just coming out of COVID lockdowns. This could have been huge. Full COVID lockdowns, we've seen other people use this, we've seen other abuse. But I specifically want to talk about the company. On the company's website, they state that they will not share any information with anyone outside of their company. That sounds really good, but upon further digging, I have found out they have received three hundred and eighty million dollars and I saw a list of partners who gave them that money. We have Motec Capital, they deal in AI technology. We have Matrix Partner, which is heavily involved in India and China giving this company money. With all this hoo-ha about TikTok selling information to Chinese entities, right now we are considering giving Flock Safety license plate readers when they have a Chinese back hole. We have Spok Capital. I can't find anything on them. They're too broad. We have Bedrock Capital, which is partnered with OpenAI, that chat robot everyone talking about. We have Initilize Capital, which deals with blockchain and they are collecting and selling. We have Tiger Global Management, which actually lost two billion dollars last week. So they're looking for some new income. I'm afraid that they're going to sell information, especially since they are partnered with Flock Safety. We have Seven Seven Says Capital, which is blockchain and they are collecting. And finally, I cannot pronounce the last one. I have no idea. It's Holowich, but it's a blockchain and they are collecting. Show this and I'm just highly suspicious of this. We say we're not going to share information. We're buying something from a company that has clear charge to this. Thank you.
Could you give us your name and address, please, sir? I didn't hear it if you gave it. I'm sorry.
I'm Jacob Morgan. I live at Napleton Choco. I'm at one of the moving units.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. For council, we appreciate all the time y'all spend helping run this community. Thank you. You're doing a great job. My name is Jim Mixon and I want to talk about the Flock system. I want to begin with the January meeting where you had a few people that were opposed to Flock. And I read that in the pilot and I was.
And I was wondering, this must be like the Austin trick where they have uh lights or cameras to catch everybody running the stop signs and everything, and then I investigated into it. And uh I got to talking and I ran into the police chief one day and I said, what's all this about? And he told me, well, it wasn't anything like what Austin is. It's license plate readers. So I got involved. I got into the Flock system. In fact, they even called me up and asked me if I wanted to buy some cameras because I got in there so often. And I found out what a world program it is. Uh, I checked in with the Round Rock, their police department website. Everybody loves it up there. They think it's a great idea. And I think they've had it now since last June and this June, they're gonna reevaluate and probably buy some more cameras. Houston, city Houston is looking at buying four hundred of these cameras pretty soon. Uh, I want to just say something too as well when I I heard some comments that the chief of police was pressing people to sign a petition. If anybody wants to know, I'm the one that drew up the petition and I'm gonna tell you what I had in it. I have two hundred and ten signatures from friends and neighbors. I didn't push anybody on it. This is how I started the petition. I put down what Flock does. Flock gets license plate recognition. Flock gathers objective evidence and facts about vehicles, not people. Flock alert uh law enforcement of wanted vehicles. Flock is used for Amber Alerts. Flock is used to solve many other crimes. Flock adheres to all state laws. Flock is not used for traffic management. Flock data is deleted every month, every thirty days. One other thing I want to say, you know, the chief of police wants the Flock machines, I believe. The sheriff already has the Flock cameras. The highway patrol has Flock cameras out on our major highways. And HOA's homeowner associations, I know there's at least one in the city of Rockport, they have a camera across the bridge going into Key Allegro. I can't imagine anybody being opposed to this. If a house is broken into a Key Allegro at a certain time, a vehicle drives in there before that happens and drives out right after the alarm goes off, I think you probably have a pretty good idea who it could be, at least if there's only a couple of vehicles. Uh, and I'm gonna try to get an HOA, our HOA uh to have three Flock cameras, even if we have to volunteer some money to do it. That way, we would know who comes in. Remember, before Harvey, we had used to have break-ins every once in a while. Well, this one, damn sure stops over there. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mixon.
Oh, I support it and so does so do the other two hundred and eleven people.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else, chief? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, council, those are will be for y'all later on. One council member had asked questions and I produced those earlier and gave a copy to the city manager. You can get those. These are available for the public's consumption as well. They're public documents. And and I want to start out with, and Flock is online to give a presentation, but I want to clear up one thing uh right away because there's been some questions and and some uh mistaken or misinformation, I think merely from a uh, I don't think any, I just think it's a um someone got wrong information in their own research about the application process and some dates and times that are out there. So I want to clear that up so there's no question about the about the process of the grant. We we were notified of the grant on March second, not in June. We were notified about this grant on March the second, and that's in this documentation. The deadline to apply for it was on May twenty seventh. Um, and in that those documents, a resolution from you, the council, would be due on or before the ninetieth day after the grant award was announced, not prior to uh the application itself. We applied, um and on behalf of the mayor is is how that's done. Uh, the mayor of the town, sometimes it's the city manager and sometimes it's me, depends on whatever grant it is, is referred to as authorized official. In this case, it's the mayor. And 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 the mayor, and at that time, actually, remember this is May, it was Patrick Rios. So this grant was was originally, and I want to be clear because I don't want anybody to think that I've not been honest. Originally, this grant was applied for under Patrick Rios and it was changed to Timothy J. Rowe. So the original paperwork shows that Patrick Rios applied for it. And that was changed and the current paperwork we have shows that that uh Mayor Timothy J. Rowe applied for it. Now, we did that on your behalf because you're the authorized official. Uh, we did that on May thirteenth. We were notified via email of the award um on June ninth. And and we were advised it would be several weeks before and there's a copy in the packet and you all have copies of what's called the statement of award would be sent. We wouldn't get it. You would get it, mayor, um because you're the authorized official. Again, that email was on June the ninth and and that would would show up later on. So we came to council on June twenty eighth to get that resolution. Um, most all of our grants require a resolution before operating, but not before applying. For whatever reason in that verbiage, it's been my entire career. I've been doing grants since the the uh mid to late two thousands. They read a resolution to apply for and accept or to apply for and operate. I don't know why that is. That's just the way it's it's always been done. Now, once we got that resolution, we uploaded it to the grant website on July the eleventh. At some point, uh and I don't know when exactly, but we did receive the statement of the MVCPA auxiliary grant award and grantee acceptance notice, and that is a document that's been all over this. Um, you got that and then we got it. I don't know exactly when, but mayor, you got that. You signed it on August the twenty seventh and we uploaded that document to the grant website on August the twenty ninth. That is the timeline uh that is correct and accurate and all of this documentation that I printed off of the grant's website today and brought. It's here for the public's consumption and and again, you'll have copies of that. I in response to Councilman Brundret, a question that he had, I provided those documents to the city manager and to Councilman Brundret. That's the real timeline. The one that's been promulgated on social media and discussed is not is not correct. This is the correct timeline. Um, we brought this to council December thirteenth because Flock Safety said they needed a resolution. There was some confusion as to whether the previous resolution was adequate. Uh, and 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 nonetheless, not to get into the weeds on that, we believed that we needed to come and get a new resolution from the council. And that's whenever uh it was tabled uh to be brought back sometime in February. For a sundry of reasons, it's been pushed off until now here today. What we've realized is the original resolution that came from the uh June twenty eighth council meeting is adequate and suffices for Flock Safety. Uh, all of the things are in place and so that's why it's a no action uh to answer the question that's come up. That's why it's a no action item. But again, to be transparent, to make sure that we're we're we are being transparent, this program actually will have logs. The public can log on and see what Flock Safety is doing. I think in a minute in the presentation that Hector Solomón is gonna give from Flock Safety, he'll show or he'll discuss that the public can log on to a public portal and you'll be able to see, the public can see what we're doing with their with with Flock Safety's uh camera systems. Um, so again, uh we're bringing it back for this presentation and for this discussion and to be able to answer any questions that that you, the council, have for me and to provide some direction since there has been such controversy uh over this this situation. So with that, uh Bob, I think that uh Hector is ready for their presentation.
Good evening uh to the council. Thank you, chief, for that introduction. My name is Hector Soliman Valdez. I am a community affairs manager with Flock Safety. Um, wanted to start off today uh by uh talking a little bit about Flock. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and go over a presentation. Um, it is disabled at the moment. If the host can just allow me to share.
We're having a sound issue right now. Can you give us just a second?
No problem.
Can you speak so we can see if you can hear him back?
Yes, testing one, two, three. 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 Can you all hear me?
You hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, if you had a question for us, ask us again and we'll try to answer it for you.
Oh, no worries. Uh, I was asking if I could share my screen. Uh, it is allowed now, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and I was introducing myself. Could you all hear me earlier? My name is Hector Soliman Valdez. I am a community affairs manager uh with Flock Safety. Uh, I wanted to start off our presentation today by giving you a little bit of context on Flock Safety, how our technology works, how we're helping um do so in an ethical and transparent way, um as well as how we're actually solving crime in Texas and nationwide. Uh, so with that being said, I wanted us to start off by talking about Flock. As I mentioned, we are a Georgia-based company. Our mission is to eliminate crime for the whole community. Uh, we were founded when our CEO and his neighbors were victims of crimes. Uh, you know, they were in an inner-city neighborhood where uh there were multiple burglaries happening, car break-ins. And just like many of you, they had Ring cameras, different video footage and, you know, being that that was the first time that they were experiencing these crimes, they reported the crimes to the police, gave them the video, but unfortunately, that wasn't enough to solve the crime. What law enforcement let our CEO know is okay, we need a uh license plate to solve this uh or to actually follow up and have a lead to solve this crime. So he started doing some research, you know, he founded several different companies before and um is a problem solver and said and noticed that uh ALPR has been around for thirty, almost forty years at this point, uh but it's extremely expensive. Typically, police departments have to purchase a camera that's tens of thousands of dollars. It goes obsolete within a year or so. Uh, and then it's also not necessarily created in an ethical way. So companies or legacy providers will would share information uh or the data to torture companies, et cetera. He wanted to build something that was affordable for his neighborhood, so he looked at a service as software as a service type of model. So with us, you're paying an annual fee for the cameras. We install them, maintain them and also provide unlimited seats to our software for your police department to solve crime. We've also will never sell the data. I mean, only it belongs to your department. So that's really where we got started um in order to help solve crime, um and really because we get and we saw that there was limited resources out there. We needed uh police departments need a force multiplier, right? They can't be everywhere at the same time and they need to receive uh that objective information. And then also that there needs to be ways for the community to engage and partner up with law enforcement as well. So how does the technology itself work? Top right-hand corner, you're seeing what actual footage is. It is not video footage. It is a still image similar to what you see here. It is the back of a vehicle. Um, it is from industry, you know, fixed locations and there is no people, as you can see in this image, there's no facial recognition and there's no traffic enforcement. Uh, your police department can search by different filters such as make and color. And it's also important to dive in a little deeper into what the technology is not. So again, as I mentioned earlier, not tied to, you know, personally identifiable information, which means we actually don't provide your department with the ability to know who's in a vehicle. We don't say John Smith is in that vehicle. What we do let your department know is say that is a vehicle that is on a wanted list for being stolen uh or other, you know, felony warrants. Uh, or it maybe matches a description of something that they're looking for. With Flock, our standard retention is thirty days. That's an important number because it gives your police department enough time to respond to crimes which many times are not reported right away, or many times folks are just on vacation. They need to be able to go in, search the system and then uh, you know, find some leads. But it's also not long-term retention of data. At that thirty days, the data is hard deleted and is no longer retrievable. There's three different aspects of the technology, so it's really important for us to understand that your police department, um their patrol officers in their vehicles, in their computers will receive real-time alerts um within twenty seconds, right? Letting them know that there is a uh wanted vehicle entering their community. So they'll be able to um, you know, investigate further. It's important to note that seven out of ten crimes, there is a vehicle involved. It's also investigative, right? Um, your chief kind of talked a little bit about the process that, you know, that they what you all are looking for this technology for. And I know that this has been in discussion for a while, um and how this will help solve crime. Any given month, you may have, you know, a particular amount of burglaries and what we see is that that amount, let's say there's ten different burglaries, that doesn't equate to the same amount of people performing those crimes, right? And so you're able to stop those folks in the first attempt, you're able to reduce those crimes. So therefore, as clearance rates increase, crime rates decrease. It also serves as a deterrent. Rockport will join other Texas cities and other cities across the country in adding this technology in their portfolio of crime-solving uh tools. So that and and folks that are committing crimes will know that, so they will keep away. So how does Flock mitigate for risk? As I mentioned earlier, we will never sell that footage. It is owned by your department. Only your department can uh share the footage within the system for legal law enforcement purposes. We're taking out the human bias side of crime solving, right? So we're letting your police department know, hey, this is a wanted vehicle. That is something that is objectively illegal. It's a stolen car, for example, versus them running random plates. All of the data is stored in AWS Cloud. It's end-to-end encrypted. Um, really important to note, all of our servers are completely within the United States. Um, and, you know, these are the same type of servers used by the FBI and CIA, highest level encryption. But also, as I mentioned, there's no personal information in this system. So it is images of the back of a vehicle and the meta uh the uh data associated with that vehicle. Uh, also, because there's no personally identifiable information, this can't be used for punitive measures such as red light cameras or uh vehicle registrations. Again, this is really for solving crime and I know that the chief mentioned uh our transparency portal. This is something that is unique to Flock. What this will allow any Rockport resident to do is go on a web page that will be, we will uh create for your department and you put it on your city website, uh different social media accounts so that any resident in real time can see, well, what is the policy? What are what is my department using this for? How many times have they searched in the past month? And, you know, how many hot list alerts are they receiving? So really having that real-time information. And then, as I mentioned, we are located in many jurisdictions over in Texas. Um, that includes um the Dallas metro area, cities such as Louisville, the colony that just signed on, Dallas, Texas, Houston, all of your major metro areas as well as many other cities. I believe we're around two hundred different cities in Texas as we speak. Um, and then I wanted to start off, excuse me, uh for uh with this story. As it, as you could probably imagine, it is a no-brainer that this technology can be used to solve crime. Uh, excuse me, uh vehicle thefts. It also can be all uh used to solve different kind of crimes, such as this one in Louisville, where this couple actually had their wedding ring and thousands of dollars of cash in their cart when somebody stole the the cart from them. You know, she had left the purse there for a second. They stole that cart. Um, but police were able to track down that thief and within hours have a happy ending here and return that to the 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 couple. Before that thief was able to spend the money or perhaps even pawn that wedding ring and they were able to go to their wedding um the next day. I wanted to also highlight this story out of San Bruno, California. It's a smash and grab case. You may have actually seen this in that because because it made national headlines. They tried to rob the store, but there was armed security there, so he was able to fend off that store. What the police department believed, however, was that they would return and escalate their level of violence, and that's exactly what happened. But the San Bruno PD was ready. They put a custom hot list alert on that vehicle and as soon as they entered that shopping center, they were able to stop them from entering that plaza, escalating their level of violence and committing the crime altogether. Therefore, um this having a preventative aspect. To date, we've also helped solve over a hundred missing and endangered children and and elderly uh individual cases. So Amber Alerts and Silver Alerts, as many folks know them. I really want to end with this story here out of Chambly, Georgia, because it's this stranger-on-stranger abduction. This is really rare. This mother that you see here was pushing her child in his stroller when two masked and armed individuals fought her. She fought valiantly, tried to take the gun away from them, but they prevailed. They took her child. She had no idea. but they prevailed. They took her child. She had no idea who these people were. She actually didn't see the license plate. As I mentioned earlier, we, with our technology, we have what is called the vehicle fingerprint. So giving them, the police department, the uh, description of that vehicle, they were able to go in to the system, search for that vehicle, put out an Amber Alert, found the vehicle in Alabama, so one stayed over, all within six hours, and made a felony stop and arrest and returned that child to her mo, to his mother. Um, these folks intended to raise a child of, as their own. Um, luckily, you know, that did not happen. Um, and this child was returned to their mother and will never remember that day, which is great. Those folks are behind bars. So really important to note, just the power of being part of this network. We're in over fourteen hundred commu, uh, police departments right now and work, as I said, with the private sector, HOAs and businesses as well, uh, to make sure that communities are protected. Here's that list. It got flipped over. Um, just a sh, a small um, uh, sampling of some of the cities in Texas. And then with that, I did a little bit of talking at you all. Would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor? Chief?
Just, just like Hector said, I don't want to talk at you, uh, um, I, I do want to clear up a little bit of, about um, the, the policy and and whether or not we have the records issues and things like that. I want to give you another quick timeline and then I just want to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, the, oh, well, let me make this salient point. There has been no Rockport Police Officer to date, and I checked today, and let me make sure I'm correct, still today. Okay, there's been no Rockport Police Officer make a stop of a motor vehicle based upon an automated license plate reader hit. Ever. We haven't made a stop. That's why when open rec, our open records request was filed and asked for the records of those, there's nothing responsive. We've not made a stop based on an ALPR hit. There's no logs of that because up until um, uh, March, just a few weeks ago, where there'd been no operational deployment of any ALPR uh, equipment, other than one camera that was deployed only testing. And the only information being brought from that was going directly to Captain Anderson because that camera for only about a month was operational, reading license plates. And it failed almost immediately, about a month in. And, and one of the big things is why Flock? And, and there's, I'm gonna give you three, three reasons of why Flock. First is just why ALPRs. One is, it's a force multiplier. I'm not gonna get, I'd like to have ten more officers, maybe fifteen. That's unrealistic. We can't afford that. Um, because we can't be everywhere all the time. This, we, I'm a believer in leveraging technology and gaining those benefits while coping with the inherent issues it brings. And I, and I understand some of the concerns, some of the issues that the public brings up. I understand privacy rights. I get those. So how do we leverage technology while coping with, with the, the inherent issues it brings? That's one of the big whys, is it's a force multiplier, right? Um, secondly, one of our biggest crimes is vehicle burglaries. We have rashes of vehicle burglaries in a lot of our neighborhoods. Many of those are HOAs and this technology, one of them already has it, another one is looking at it. Well, a lot of our neighborhoods don't have HOAs and, and they're not going to get the benefit of this technology. And that being one of our, our largest crimes, uh, that's, that's where the police department comes in and says, how, I, I say, how do I get that technology and help all of the Rockport citizens, not just those that are living in uh, HOA neighborhoods, to, to help catch people that break into vehicles and hopefully pre, hopefully prevent, when I know that, that vehicle burglars have struck here, how do I catch them before they strike another neighborhood, two or three more, when I can finally catch up to them? We don't have a lot of violent crime in, in Rockport, Texas. We do have a, a little, but we don't have a lot. What we do have though, are violent criminals that for whatever reason come here and hide out. I've given you examples of, of Houston homicide coming and asking for our help and we found those homicide suspects hiding in Rockport. San Antonio homicide came here. We didn't find those, but we know they were here. ALPRs would have helped in both of those situations. Uh, a, uh, Aryan Brotherhood shootout occurred in, uh, I believe it was Missouri. They, the shooters came here and hid out. I don't know why. I guess they liked the, the greatest beach town city in Texas. I, I guess, I, I can only assume. Those are uh, my two big whys on ALPRs. The why on Flock Safety is directly related to this policy issue. And that, that very quick, I'll be brief about that timeline is retired Commander Jerry Long, uh, this predates me, a, a little, shortly before I got here. He bought two cameras, static pole-mounted cameras, one of which had a license plate reader technology, but it was never activated. Didn't have the software in it. And they used that camera for other, other things. They used it since I'd been here. That directive that you've all seen, the memorandum, it's not a policy. It's a memorandum, the subject line of which reads "License Plate Reader Directive." At that point, Lieutenant Anderson, he wa, he wasn't promoted yet. He was already slated to take uh, Jerry Long's place over CID. Lieutenant Anderson wrote that memo to me because he saw the value in, in uh, license plate readers, as did I. And he said, this camera has that capability. I want to get the software. I want to make it work, but I want to test it because I don't know a lot about it yet. And as, and, and that was in January of two thousand twenty-two. That's the date on that memorandum. Again, not a policy, it's a memorandum. And in order to begin that process, we needed some kind of policy uh, by DPS standards to, to be able to even start this process. He found that, or maybe we found that, I, I believe it may have been him, I don't remember. On uh, the International Association of Chiefs of Police website and their policy, they've got a policy section. Bullerplate brought it down verbatim, wrote that memo to me, so we had something in place as a mirror placeholder. None of those Bullerplate policies are meant to be perfect for your agency to hold on to forever. And that was only for him to get started with that one camera. And he deployed that camera, and I'll tell you where, near Business Thirty-five and Market Street. Had it hung on a pole. It was not operational for LPR. It did not read license plates. He put it up in late uh, spring or early summer of two thousand twenty-two. The company that, that Jerry Long had bought it from was finally able to get the software, correct me, now Captain Anderson, if, if, if I get off base here, finally got it operational for LPRs in September and, and the, and it was, again, never, it was in test mode. I'll say operational. Let me, let me make sure I'm clear on this. He got the LPR system operational to test it. It was never deployed operational. Troops were not receiving information. Only Captain Anderson was. The only tag we ever put in it, he ever put in it, was his city vehicle's license plate. So he could drive through it and see if it worked, and that's it. It's the only thing it ever did. And in October eleventh, maybe, something like that, early October, the hard drive in it crashed. Every record, everything it's done, crashed. It's dead. IT couldn't bring it back. The company couldn't bring it back. There's no records available from that. That's why that my response in the open records request is nothing to, we got nothing. There's no responsive records. There's never been a stop made on that. That camera is sitting on the floor in Captain Anderson's office. They finally got a new hard drive put into it and we're still waiting on the company to make it operational. So my third why, why Flock? Because I don't want to buy or own any more cameras, because that high-dollar camera still, it was bought with budget money before I, I got here, so say two thousand eighteen, two thou, sometime in there. It's a lot of money. Si, never been you sitting on the floor in Captain Anderson. I don't want to own any more cameras. This is a good budget decision to, to rent these cameras, lease these cameras from Flock Safety. All my colleagues across the state, I go to chiefs conferences, I talk to them and I ask them, what do you do for LPRs? What, what's your cho, what, what, how you doing that? All of them say, don't buy them. Leasing them's better. Look at this company, that company. I've reviewed these. I've looked at those. Flock Safety is the one that I think is the best way to go for our solution. So with that, that, that's the timeline on that policy. Once, once we knew that the, the cameras are coming in for the grant vehicles, the mobile cameras, I began writing our policy, not this Bullerplate memo that, that we got from a website, a, a policy uh, uh, you know, section of the IACP's website. I wrote a Rockport Police Department policy. I want to push back on that. I'm, I'm a recognized policy expert. I testify about policies in, in state district court. I'm recognized in federal court. The Texas Police Chiefs Association um, sends me to other agencies to evaluate their policies. Mary, you're familiar with the Texas Police Chiefs Best Practices Agencies. We are one of those. We are recognized. We're accredited agency. Our policies are tight. I've written this policy. It is tight and I'm happy to discuss it with any citizen, with any of you, with the city manager, with our city attorneys to go over this policy and, and show and demonstrate that it is, that it is a tight policy where we will hold our folks accountable. Most importantly, it'll stand the, the muster, the constitutional muster in any stop, no matter what, whether it's an LPR-based stop, any stop that a patrol officer makes must, must be based on reasonable, reasonable suspicion or probable cause. Period. It triggers Fourth Amendment issues. So with that, what questions can I answer for any of you?
I mean, I don't really have, I don't know if you have the answer to the question, but my concern is always going to be um, just where the data goes. And I, I understand it says thirty days and it goes into a cloud. But just having that concern, it just sits in the back of my head. Like, where are these info? After thirty days, how do we know it's gone? How do we know it's not sitting there?
We, we, in that policy, it, it, Captain Anderson audits it. I believe it says every, every, uh, six months, two times a year. I audit it once a year. We look for a couple of things. One, that, that, uh, and, and, and Flock audits it as well. They're, uh, Hector can answer questions about that. We make sure that, uh, that the retention periods are working, but I also look for if, if anyone is using it appropriate. That's what those audits are for, to make sure that we're using it as we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, and Councilwoman, uh, to your question on-
I'm sorry, Hector, once, may answer your question again. I'm sorry.
So, can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so, uh, Councilwoman, uh, the data is stored for thirty days, uh, as I mentioned in the, in the presentation. When an image is captured, it has what's called a time to live, uh, which marks it basically to be hard deleted at thirty days, so that, at that point, it is deleted. Um, I, I believe that was, it was that, does that answer your question? Or concern?
I, I got the answer from you through the audit. My other question is, is that available for public persons to know the audit that, from, if I found, if I found those audits?
I, I, I think it would be, I mean, obviously anything, like, I would assess to make sure that it, that it is uh, releasable. I, I, I wouldn't oppose, I'd have to do that case by case, but I sort of wouldn't oppose someone looking at an audit to make sure that we're doing that correctly. I'll offer this for you. We have retention dates on our body-worn cameras for, for uh, for video on the in-car cameras. And I'm gonna tell you, that collects so much more data, video, everything than these do. We go inside people's homes. Um, we, we see people at their most vulnerable and it's all on body-worn cameras. And, and so we, we have a ton of stuff and, and our retention dates for that is actually a hundred and eighty days. And, and the reason for that is in case someone complains, files a complaint, files a suit, whatever it is, we want to store that data for as long as possible. Now, if it, if it relates to a crime or something, we mark that as evidence and it's basically held for the statute limitations. Um, if it's not, we, we mark it as, where we don't mark it for anything, and at a hundred and eighty days, it rolls off the system. Now, there's times where we realized at one point, not long after I had come on, that, that stuff was not rolling off and working with IT. I, I said, hey, we have a retention date. It's in our policy. We need to, we need to make sure that's, that's doing. And the question was said, are we sure we want to get it? Hey, it's a retention date. It's a hard date. If, if it's a hundred and eighty-two days and somebody wants that, well, they should have saved it for evidence. Which you have to have a reason to say, why is this evidence and why is it not? So, so we are, and, and just to make sure that you understand how serious I am about that, um, we, you know, we want to make sure, and it's a live-or-die date. I think that's what Hector's kind of saying, that if, if, if you look for a video or you look for something in this, at, at day one eighty-five, or in this case, day ninety-five, and it's not there, it's not there. You, you either needed to hold it for evidence, or you should have looked ten days ago. It's, it's a hard date and it drops off the system and it's gone.
Cor, correct. There's nothing that the department actually needs to do as far as retention when it comes to our system, because every single image is, has that time-to-live date that will hard delete it at thirty days.
Other questions?
Thank you very much, Chief. It is seven fifty-two. We're going to take ten-minute recess. We'll be be, back at five minutes after eight.
Just, uh, if I may ask, is there still more discussion on this item?
I don't believe so, Hector. I believe we're, we'll finish for that item.
Okay, perfect. There was no vote?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
It is eight oh four. We're back in session. Official zoning map is stipulated under Article 4.1 of City of Rockport Zoning Ordinance Number 1027. By changing the zoning of land from Planned Unit Development, PUD, with R5 Second Multifamily Dwelling District Use for Property located at 1724 FM 3036, also known as La Salle, PUD, Single Use Overlay District containing eighty attached single-family dwelling townhouses, along with such features and amenities, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
As explained in your packet, La Salle was originally approved for a PUD with the single-family homes, townhomes. After the storm, they came back, and, and I guess there was a lot of damage to them, and rather go back with the townhomes, they had it changed to R5 PUD, to be able to repair those and maybe create some workforce housing. Well, that didn't materialize, and, and they just continued building townhomes, which is fine, except that that's not what the PUD was for now. So they just want to go back to the original PUD to be in compliance as they're, as they're building townhomes. And I believe I have two permits on hold until this is approved.
We have questions regarding this issue.
I move to approve item seventeen as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? If not, a call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three. Ward four.
I'm abstaining due to conflict of interest.
Mayor, aye. Vote is three to nothing with one abstention. Item number eighteen, deliberate and act on request of utility service agreement by, between the City of Rockport, Texas, a home room municipality, the city, and Rockport Landing, GP LLC, a Texas domestic limited liability company developer, regarding the city's provision of water, wastewater, and natural gas service, and any associated facilities for the provision of said utilities on the land owned by the developer. Ms. Dietrich?
This is a development agreement with the, with Mr. Moreland and Rockport Landing to provide utilities to his project that will be just north of one eighty-eight. I believe there is a, an exhibit in your, in your packet of what that is. And this is, what they want to do is they want to reserve LUEs in that lift station and in that line. And to do so, they'll pay five hundred dollars of the pro rata, which is a total of twenty-seven thirty-nine per LUE, they'll pay five hundred dollars per LUE that they want to reserve. And that's good for, Jean, remind me, that's good for five years. Now, at the end of five years, if they have not used them, they have not developed, it's gone, and they don't get their money back. So. And they have agreed to voluntary annexation, even when the city limits becomes adjacent to their property. And there is no time limit on that.
Any questions?
So all they're doing is just reserving the space on wastewater system?
Yes, correct. Correct.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda item eighteen as written.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Abstain due to potential conflict.
Okay, one abstention. Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number nineteen, deliberate and act on request for utility services agreement by, between the City of Rockport, Texas, a home room municipality, the city, and Milo Holdings LLC, a Texas domestic limited liability company developer, regarding the city's provision of water, wastewater, natural gas services, and any associated facilities for provision of said utilities on land owned by the developer. Ms. Dietrich?
Again, this is the same agreement with Milo Holdings, which is the manager, and to reserve LUEs for the subdivision known as La Buena Vida Two. And it's already platted. And it's seventy-two LUEs. Again, five hundred dollars per LUE, good for five years. If they do not develop, then it's, it's gone, and they don't get their money back. And they have agreed to voluntary annexation.
All right. Questions? Call for a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda item number nineteen as read.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? Not call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Abstain due to potential conflict.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. We have three to nothing. Vote with one abstention. Item number twenty, deliberate and act on supplemental request for hotel occupancy tax funds from airplanes and coffee for warbirds over South Texas to be held at Ranjus County Airport on May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, 2023.
Mayor, council, Mr. Stewart approached me a couple of weeks ago about his hotel motel tax for an event that a window opened up for us to have. It's a really good event. I wanted him to have his opportunity to promote his event, and he's asking for ten thousand dollars of hotel motel tax. My recommendation on this is going to be disapproval, and it's not because I don't think the event is good, but our hotel motel collections are only at about twenty percent or fifty percent through the year. I know we'll get an influx through the summer, but I don't want to spend any more money when we don't have access collected right now. Additionally, waiting until the standard application process will give him the opportunity to compete with everybody else, as well as provide statistics as to what the event does this year. But I did want to give him the opportunity to promote his event and tell us what he's trying to do, and then I have a feeling you'll see him back during the budget cycle.
Could we?
Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. I'll try to be brief. I submitted a presentation ad. I don't know if it got loaded or not. It's in the engine. Oh, perfect. So, my name's Cody Stewart. I'm an advocate for the airport and education here in Ranjus County in the aviation sector. A little bit about me, I grew up here as a kid, was doing the, I remember going to the air shows in Fourth of July that Brian Brock used to put on. I don't know if somebody will remember that or not, but that's where I got involved in aviation years ago. Back in 2020, we started having little fly-ins, and they have grown exponentially over the last three years. The biggest one being this last December, the holiday, the Coastal Bend Holiday flying. Please go down to the executive summary. So what we're trying to do with this event is, one, it's Memorial Day. It's really important that we remember what Memorial Day stands for with the men and women that paid all the sacrifice, especially from the Coastal Bend. A lot of people may not know or have forgotten that the Coastal Bend was a huge contributor to the war effort in World War II. The biggest one being the airbase in Corpus Christi. That being said, the Navy came over in 1942 and approached Ranjus County. They did land grabbing in 1943. The Navy opened up Ranjus County Airport for the war effort. So it's its eightieth birthday this year, here in Rockport. Also, the US Lexington, right down the road, she was commissioned in 1943. It's also her eightieth birthday. So we had the opportunity to hold not only Memorial Day event here in Rockport, but we're also celebrating these birthdays that, you know, made up the Coastal Bend, especially in, in the aviation sector. So, long story short, that's what we're doing. So we're promoting the history side of this to our kids, trying to get them involved in our local flat schools, high school, the flat school programs and that type of thing. But this is a really cool opportunity to push history. Next slide, please. Like I mentioned previously, this was our event in December. It's our largest to date. We estimated we had three to four thousand people in attendance, and let me remind you, this is two weeks before Christmas. We had a lot of people out at the airport over two and a half days. We had eighty-five, what we call general aviation airplanes. That's just people flying in, your little Cessnas and Pipers and Beechcrafts, that type of thing. And then we had twenty-five historical airplanes, which we call warbirds, that showed up to the event. Some of the pictures, they're hard to see, but you can see those in the background. The biggest being the B-25 bomber from San Marcos. And in this event, like I said, we've been pushing education. We gave away free flights to kids between ages of eight and eighteen, and we had fifty to sixty of those kids show up and take flights. It was one of the largest in the area. Next slide, please. So that's what we did in December. Here's our opportunity as Rockport. And as the city manager said, this is a seed planted for us to, to take and try to grow as big as we can. That being said, Go Wheels Up is a San Marcos Memorial Day event. One of the reasons we picked December for Rockport events is because everybody else had major weekends locked up with major shows. December was the only one we could grab, because nobody had it on their schedule. Unfortunately for San Marcos, their event was canceled seven weeks ago. And because we did such a good job in December, some of the participants that were scheduled to go to San Marcos called us and said, would you pick up the pieces and try to have an event in Rockport? Because there's nothing, or there's nothing else scheduled that weekend. So our team at the airport has been working, chasing our tails to put an event together for Memorial Day weekend, knock it out of the park, because we want that weekend for the foreseeable future. So this is our one shot at capturing a major weekend, especially for an airshow. This is also Rockport's summer kickoff weekend. We usually have a lot of people coming here anyway. What makes this unique, especially for hotel motel tax, is you're not just getting people traveling here by car, they're coming by airplane. In December, we had weather that had about two hundred airplanes at bay that were coming from Dallas-Fort Worth. So if people are flying in from Dallas-Fort Worth and West Texas, they're most likely going to stay in the hotel. So we're not just capturing vehicles coming in, we're capturing airplanes flying in. So we are double dipping on potential tourists coming to Rockport using an aviation event. Education highlights, like I said, we're really pushing the local area history, but we now have the opportunity not to have one air event, we have two. So we will hopefully follow up in December, which will be more of the seminar, more of the, you know, how do you take a career in aviation as a high school and junior high kid in the Coastal Bend. So that was the education highlights. Next slide, please. Why do we need hot funds? I don't know if you've been out to the airport, but it is a historical site. Like I said, this was built for the war effort in 1943. So this is a historical place here in the county and in the city, which qualifies for hot funds to be used. So we're, we're grabbing a hold of not just the education, the advertising, but the historical preservation of our airport and the airplanes that were here. Next slide, please. Why are we asking a city of Rockport? The event location is in city limits. So the FBO, or some people know as the Terminal Building, is located in the city limits of Rockport. So that's the zoning map you see there and on the- So that's the zoning map you see there and on the right side is the event location. Like I said, it's right there, we're we're going to have all the airplanes and all the vendors. So that's why we're coming to the city of Rockport. Next slide, please. Why do we need hot funds? We estimate we're going to spend thirty-five thousand dollars, first and foremost is safety. So I don't know if any of you know about the Commemorative Air Force, they've been around for a long time, but they are the ones with the warbirds and the crews that make it happen. Because everybody was going to San Marcos, we are able to grab, if we raise the money, their A-team, which would be the marshalling detachment team, which will allow people and families to walk up to an airplane and touch, hug, talk to the pilots, you know, they get to get up close and personal with airplanes, not just the regular airplanes, but the warbirds. And whenever those engines start up, we get everybody away. So it's a team of people that that makes the ramps what we call safe. The flight line detachment, that's making sure all those round engines from the nineteen forties are in the way they should. So we're bringing the flight line detachment. We need an extra fuel truck at the airport because we're expecting so many airplanes this Memorial Day weekend that one truck is not going to be enough, we need two. Third is fuel for the event, a lot of these airplanes that we're bringing in that qualify for fewer nineteen fifty-five built or older, most of them are in the forties. And they're largely owned by nonprofits and we need to help them with our operation costs if they're going to bring their airplanes to Rockport. So fuel is one of the biggest line items for that. For example, the B-25 bomber coming out of San Marcos burns, you know, to get here and back will probably take four hundred gallons of fuel. That's a lot of fuel for one airplane, so you multiply that by, you know, other airplanes coming, we need a lot of fuel. In our packet, that's where majority of the Rockport hot funds would go, is fuel promotion to bring these airplanes to Rockport. And then everything else from law enforcement help, event setups, it's all, you know, it all takes money. So we are looking to y'all to help us prop up this event, either through hot funds and or sponsorship, if funds are not available, we may consider sponsorship. But we think this is one of the best things that Rockport has the opportunity to grab that's come along in a long time. Next slide, please. So we not only are asking Ranji's County, City of Rockport, we also are asking local businesses to support the event and we do have several have come on board. And I do apologize for the timing of this because usually we would be a year in advance, two years in advance to plan this, but since it was, hey, San Marcos canceled, y'all have the opportunity, we're doing our best to to grab that opportunity and run with it. So again, forgive us for being short notice on it, but this, the hand we were dealt with it, so thank you for your time.
What you do?
Thank you.
All right. And I wish I had all the money to give you. I wish that we had the hot funds, we could just say, here, go. But we have no data and that's what this first event will be. And, you know, when you come back in June, July, whenever we do the hot funds and you give us everything, we can go, dude. Okay.
I understand.
And that's kind of, I had to piggyback off that, that I really do appreciate what you're doing, I think it's a great event. But without that data and it's without having any information for us in front of us to say, hey, it is an event that's going to bring people, you know, heads in beds, that's what hot funds is for. And they are very particular on their rules, we have to make very sure that we're careful on how we distribute it and how we handle it. So just thank you for doing it and please come back with the numbers and I think we can definitely help you out with that.
I understand and Ranji's County has given us eight thousand dollars in their hot funds and so we are going to be doing the surveys on where people come from, what zip code, are they staying the night, where are they staying the night? So it's a free event. And so that being said, to get in the event, you have to take the survey, so that's both ground and air. And then how we're going to capture that data.
I appreciate everything, I know how hard you worked on this and I've talked with you several times about it. I wish there was something more that we could do, but it's the wrong time of the year and we have to rely heavily on our manager and what she believes and I wish we could help, but I just don't see it. We need a motion because it's an action item.
Mayor, question, is is there a precedence? Or is there a legal reason why we cannot give hot funds at this time if the county was able to?
We're able to. But if you if you guys want to do it, we certainly can. But again, our collections aren't in, we don't know where we're going to land, so if you're giving it and it doesn't, the hot funds don't come in for it, you're going to have to make it up out of the general fund and don't have the tested data now, you certainly can't give it. I mean, with the projections and we have a healthy hot fund reserve, if it doesn't make it, we can take it out of there. So it's not a no, y'all have the option.
Can we not get out of the hot fund reserve right now because we we didn't use all of our hot funds from last year? We put some into the reserve, is that not applicable to this? To this event?
So we didn't get all our hot funds from last year.
So I I get that question that we can do it, but I do have concern, just I had attended the TDC meeting just a month ago and with hot funds, I mean, the way they explain it, they're they're really getting down to a point where they're really making sure that you're doing it correctly and making sure you're getting the right data, you're making sure you're doing all this stuff and that's just, and I'm the liaison for that committee, so I do go to there and again, I think you're doing it right, but I really have to side on the edge of being cautious that we do it the correct way, otherwise it can come back and, you know, it's not going to be a good situation for anyone who does get all the hot funds. We also have people who have hot funds who have all this data and we require them to do it and then now we're going to give out hot funds and then not have that requirement for you. So I have to think of it on that side of it, not just if we have it or not.
And you're opening the door for everybody to come at any time of year.
So I just, I have to think of all those different avenues of where how that works.
I I understand what what y'all are saying, is, how about the city sponsorship? Something to give to this this event?
Yep, we can do a sponsorship as the city.
Yeah, I would think that'd be a good idea.
Great.
I make a motion that we become platinum sponsors for the warbirds over South Texas event.
Second. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question, what was the platinum?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
And some other stuff.
I have a motion and a second, any further question? Not we'll call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye? Who passes the last? Thank you.
Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you very much.
Are you guys still doing the flight down and around and back? You didn't talk about that.
So if you go back to the executive summary, if it's still there, is one of the things we're going to do for the area, if we get enough warbirds down here is because it's the eightieth birthday of the Lexington, we're going to have a warbird parade launching out of Rockport. So it's, right now we have six, we're hoping to have up to twenty. We will take off, we will hug Key Allegro, take the beach downtown and then we will pass over Ocean Drive, take the Lexington, the aquarium, down our left wing, North Beach, we'll loop back, hit Rockport Beach one more time, land and then everybody else can come see the airplane. So we're hoping that not just, and I know this is, now we're not talking about hot funds since you're a sponsor, is we're going to be grabbing a lot of people out of Corpus down for Memorial Day weekend to hopefully come to Rockport. And because it's a free event for families and that's our heavy promotion, you know, you can go to Rockport Beach, you're going to spend whatever it is, twenty, thirty bucks for a permit and everybody else is, you know, have entry fees. You can look up, see a bunch of airplanes and go to the airport and have a free event as a family, free parking. And so we think we're going to draw a lot of folks from neighboring counties that are visiting anyway. So hopefully it gives Rockport another, you know, hot button to to visit later on next year in two thousand and twenty-four. So, yeah, the parade's going to be pretty cool.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two, city manager report.
I'm sorry?
Your turn.
I have nothing.
Have nothing. Reports from council.
Ward one's happened. The second Saturday event, a couple of weekends ago, we actually had, what was it? At least two businesses do their best sales day ever. So thanks, everybody who went down for that, that was on Easter weekend. The next one is going to be on World Collage Day, which is May thirteenth. More information on that, then on the sixteenth of June, or no, not sixteenth, eighth of June, is going to be, we're going to yard bomb. It'll be fun, lots of information will be delivered out real soon, so watch out for that. I will say it because there's an election going on. Charter amendments and the the selling of the gas station are on the ballot and we really need everybody to go out and vote.
Ward three?
He's got nothing and it's too hard to hear on Zoom.
Okay. Four.
I do not have anything right now, very quiet.
Mayor, very briefly, attended a fundraiser for the Children's Coalition of Ranji's County and they're doing fantastic job of working with families that need help with their kids. They've got a school going on for preschool kids and they have teachers that they are beginning to hire. They're planning on increasing the size of their preschool school for kids and they're doing a tremendous job in helping out our community and it was it was great being there and I appreciated being invited to their plant and having the opportunity to write them a check along with a lot of other people. But do support them if you get a chance, they do a great job and I have nothing else. City council, hold an executive session pursuant to provision as a section five-five-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, known a matter in which the duty of attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter Concho Street and General Land Office GLO drainage projects and section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person considered the possible purchase of the real property. It is eight-thirty and we are in executive session. considered the possible purchase of the real property, it is eight-thirty and we are in executive session.